I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of February tenth, two thousand and fourteen, to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith, absent. Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
And City Manager Kiri.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. If it all stands for the invocation from Rajan Zed, President of the University Society of Hinduism. Welcome Rajan.
Thank you. We pray for the city of sparks out of the ancient Sanskrit scriptures, some as old as fifteen hundred BCE. I will read in Sanskrit and translate into English. Om Bhur Vahas Vahat Tatsavitur Varenyam Bhargo Devasya Dhimahi Diyo Yona Pachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Satgamya, Tamsoma Jyotirgamya, Mriti or Mamratamgamya. Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from darkness to light. Lead me from death to immortality. Niyatam Kurukarma, Tum Karma Jaya Haya Karma Na, Shadira Yatraapi, Cha Tenaprisidiyata Karma Na, Yaganarthath Karma Naau, Niatra Lokoyam Karma Bandhana, Datham Karma Konte Amukta Sang Samachara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to maintain your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Tasmaada Saktastatham Karam Karma Samachara, Sakto Haya Charan Karma Parma Pnauti Purusha, Karma Nevahi Samsidhi Masitaja Janka Deha, Loka Sangriha Mevapi Sampah Shankar Tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One achieves the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vartu Sahana Dhanattu Sahaviryan Karbabhai Tijasvi Navadi Tamastu Maavidvisha Bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akutti Samna Hirdyaniwa Samnamastu Vamano Yatha Vasu Sahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti Shanti Shanti. Peace, peace, peace unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thank you Rajan. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Ratty, would you lead us?
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have comments from the public. If you'd like to speak under comments from the public, please ask the clerk for one of these speaking cards and put your name on it and we'll get you in under comments. I have one card today. It's from Christopher Black. Welcome Christopher, come on up. Yes, that's fine. Or you can just sit down at the microphone if you want. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, that's all right, thank you. First timer. Christopher Black, Sparks resident. I come today to talk to the board about the fire access road that runs between Skyridge Estates One and Skyridge Estates Two, connects Cloud Peak to Pop-Tart. I'm a resident of Skyridge Two, so I'm above the fire access road. Currently, our neighborhood, we're only able to access it from the east off of Desert Hills and Goodwin. We're unable to enter or exit our neighborhood through any other road. The residents there have expressed some concern about the safety of only having one way in and one way out of our neighborhood. God forbid there was ever some kind of natural disaster, something like that, that cut off that exit to the east. Those residents in Skyridge Two would have no way out. Currently, there is a gate at the bottom of Pop-Tart that separates our neighborhood from accessing that fire access road. Previously, the gate had a click to enter on it for the fire department. And I understand the board, I'm not exactly sure of the exact details, required our home builder to put in that gate and that click to enter access. But I understand that in the contract, no one wrote that he had to maintain it. So that click to enter has been broken now for some time. And to prevent, I guess, unwanted traffic from using that fire access road, I understand the fire department has put a, pretty much a chain lock with a key to access lock on that gate now. So now, no one can use that gate. And it's going to take time for the fire department to get out and have to get a key and open it up. So I come with a solution. I don't want to just bring you a problem. The residents there have expressed the thought that we would be happy to take over the cost of that click to enter, both the electricity to run it and the repair of it to keep it running. I know there's more to it that would go into it than that. But we'd just like to have a conversation about the possibility of us taking over that click to enter so that we could use that gate. The only other thing would be how do we, how do we prevent the gate from being abused? Because I understand the neighborhood below us there has some concern that that access road would turn into a free-for-all and they would triple or quadruple their traffic. All that could be ironed out, but as simple as issuing remotes to the Skyridge Two Estates people so that only we had access to that gate. That's it. Hope I can have a conversation after this, but I appreciate your time.
Thanks Christopher. I'm sure the manager took down some notes and someone who will be contacting you about it. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, appreciate it. Anyone else under comments from the public? Okay, next is approval of the agenda, and I would like to pull six point eight discussion, possible action on mayor's appointment to new city manager. Mr. Smith was called out of town unexpectedly today, and I think that's an important topic that we all need to discuss as a full council, so I'd like to move that to our next meeting on the twenty-fourth. So take that into consideration when you make a motion, if you don't mind, please. Any other changes? I do have a consent item that I'll pull when we get to consent items, so. Looking for a motion.
This didn't come up, Gino.
Ms. Ratty?
We'll move to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of removing the six point eight.
Do you have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
The exception is removing?
Removing six point eight.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously without change. Okay, three point one, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Any omissions, corrections, or deletions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? It's moved by councilman Lawson, seconded by councilwoman Ratty, to approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, Mr. Smith and Mr., okay, I see. Who did not vote?
Something, Mr. Schmidt.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Let's move on to presentations on the redesign and planned remodel of John Esquaga's Nugget. Mr. Gear, welcome. Mr. Gear and entourage.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for allowing me to update you on the progress of the construction. I am, attending with me are my two lovely assistants here, Vanna White, AKA Lauren Garber, and Lisa Jansen, who's going to be operating the computer. It's been a couple of months now since the last time I appeared before the board, the council, to discuss the transaction of the Nugget. That time, we discussed loosely our plans for repositioning and renovating the Nugget and the various aspects of the Nugget and creating a new value proposition that will better appeal to Sparks residents as well as Reno residents, as well as out-of-town guests. Today is an important day for us because we put up our first demolition walls outside of Trader Dick's. I saw many of you at the press party that we had last Monday, and I'm basically giving you the same presentation that I presented to the press and to other political figures here in town, and giving you an opportunity to ask any questions that you might have of us regarding our renovation plans or our progress. To that end, I brought my construction hat as a prop. Not only is it appropriate, because it is the first day of demolition, but at the same time, if anybody has any hardball questions, I can put my hat on. We can start with, why don't you go to the first slide? These are tough to see, so I have Lauren, and if you look at, Vanna is, you look at, you can see a fairly significant renovation of the main floor of the casino, starting with the gift shop down here, removing the gift shop from downstairs to up here across from the lobby. We're redoing the lobby bar here to make that much more appealing and exciting. We're moving bingo from downstairs to up here where the tournament games are currently positioned. We have a new high-limit slots area, as well as a new VIP lounge for our best players. We have a new sports and race book, which is being moved again from downstairs to where, to the location of the existing cabaret. That will include a brand-new sports bar, a video store, video art for sports betting, and a betting counter, obviously, a new deli, and poking around the location here. Of course, the cornerstone of our renovation, starting today, is the renovation of Trader Dick's into Gillies in this loca, in the location of the Trader Dick's. Obviously, we're going to be renovating the restaurants as we go, and then, I promised everyone we wouldn't do anything with the Oyster Bar, I will then replace the carpet. So the pan most will remain the same. And the meat and head is actually going to be expanded somewhat with some expanded seating because it's a very popular little fast-food restaurant as well. This renovation, Gillies, is intended to open by June first, which is about the time of the Reno rodeo. The sports book is intended to, you notice I say intended, there's always consequences.
During construction, as I was.
During construction. Is intended to open during, around August first. You'll notice the new pit area here, which includes, and you'll see a, later in another drawing, you'll see a, what I call the fire pit seating, which is going to be a significant ceiling treatment that we're doing to enhance the appearance of the pit area, as well as some carpets. I was going to bring the carpet samples, but I thought you guys would have enough of me before even got to the carpet samples. Along with this, we'll be doing a complete re-carpet of this entire main floor with two different styles of carpet. And we're going to be, for this year, we're going to be renovating the exterior fascia on the north side and the, what is that, east side of the building, the old building, Victorian Avenue building, so we can present our best face, hopefully, to our ribs cook-off folks and hot August nights folks. And then, the, the repainting of the tower is probably going to be delayed until sometime early next year. So we have a fairly significant critical path that contemplates trying to minimize disruption to the casino. And if you look at the way this is panning out right now, we have, this area is going to be behind walls, starting in, end of March, this area here will be behind walls, and this will be somewhat of a, this will be the walk-through area. And then, once these two areas open, we will be closing this area here for the extensive treatment in the, in the ceiling work, in the soffit area here. So these other areas will be coming along as, at the same time concurrently as these. So we should, we hope to have all of this complete substantially by November of this year.
Next.
So this is, this is kind of, if you see this, and it's hard to see it, I'm sorry. I think there's a better picture later. This is a depiction of our sports book area and sports bar area. That is the VIP lounge and high-limit area here, a little bit larger scope for you. I, I hope that you have that in front of you. If you do, it makes it a little easier for you to see it. And then, the new bingo area here, which will be, still, we're planning on, we're even looking at doing what's called cosmic bingo area to create a little bit of additional excitement on a Friday and Saturday night for, particularly for local patrons. Here it is. This is the, this is the fire pit area, so you can see when, in one of the original draw, the first drawing, you saw kind of the dogleg effect in the ceiling. And this is a, intended, it's a soffit work that is, that is intended to relay kind of the energy of a fire. And then, you'll notice the carpet is very organic. This is one of two carpets that we're going to be doing on the main floor. Gillies Girls, Gillies Sign. This is a depiction of Gillies, a bigger depiction of Gillies. You'll notice that I was very concerned in our design that we created the visibility of the energy of this particular entertainment arena. We have glass here. We have a twelve-foot door here so that a lot of the energy can spill out into the main casino area. You'll notice we have two bars, a stage here, dance floor, seating for around two-hundred-and-fifty people in the lounge area, and about a hundred-and-fifty people in the actual restaurant. The restaurant will be serving ribs, chicken, steaks. It'll be the kind of value-oriented experience that people are looking for today, middle America, all-American food.
Next.
Next. Oh, that's it?
I'm up on the screen here.
Oh, this is the, this is the lobby treatment. And you can see the, this doesn't work up there. You can see the carpet is this maroon kind of carpet with gold veins. It's very striking when you see the actual production of it. It's, it'll be through the lobby and most of the casino, with the exception of that organic carpet, what I call the organic carpet, around the pit area. You'll also notice that we put in, I believe there's five grand chandeliers that evoke the idea of a golden nugget, there are golden globes that will be, create a lot of interest and excitement within the lobby itself. We'll also be taking the pillars in these areas and redoing a lot of those with natural stone work or faux-stone work, and various lighting, design elements to create a real sense of newness and excitement within the facility. This is another depiction of the lobby columns. Now, the carpet on the right is right. The carpet on the left has already been redesigned, and so, it's somewhat like what we're talking about, but it, it's much more interesting than that. But you'll notice the cover on the right. The Gillies sign, we're in the process of designing our Gillies sign and our logo. Again, the Gillies girls. Girls riding a bull. This is, this is a depiction of, this is the actual Gillies in Las Vegas. And our design is intended to evoke that same feeling. Again, various elements of the restaurant, food, Gillies floor plan again. Any questions?
Questions? One question, is there been any discussion? I know we always had a problem with the, between the towers is the Interstate eighty. Has there been any discussion with NDOT about maybe working towards removing what's on top of your building and filling that in with a road?
Yeah, there has been, and it hasn't gone very far because the discussions were just initiated, I think, last Friday. They are concerned to us because, obviously, that's going to be very disruptive, and no matter what you do over our ceiling, it's going to be a potential challenge for us because if one of those big beams falls through or whatever, we have, you know, not only do we have a significant investment in renovating the facility, but then, you know, do we need to put additional pillars? And so, we are very concerned about that. And NDOT has been very, 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 they've worked with us well, they've been reasonable to deal with, so we'll keep you informed as to, to how that plays out.
Thanks. Any, any other questions? Go ahead, Julia.
Thank you. I've had a couple, so, great to see the investment. I've had a couple of questions from folks in the arts community about the future of Last Chance Joe.
Oh, geez. Let's see, where do I go with Last Chance Joe? If anybody wants Last Chance Joe, we would be happy to entertain the idea of them coming and taking Last Chance Joe, so that would be fine. To be quite honest with you, our exterior design does not contemplate Last Chance Joe being there. And actually, Mr. Esquaga had told me before even the transaction that he was thinking about getting rid of Last Chance Joe, that it would been time. You know, there is a season for all things, and Julia, you and I discussed Trader Dick's and how important Trader Dick's has been to the community for fifty-eight years, and I'm glad, I'm segueing here, but I wanted to say that it is sad that we lost Trader Dick's. At the same time, if you think about the customer acquisition opportunity that a Gillies, that's going to do three-hundred-and-fifty thousand customers per year versus Trader Dick's twenty thousand customers per year, and the employment opportunities of employing forty or fifty people versus fifteen or twenty, it's, the change is, is necessary for us, and it's a positive, I think, for the community and for the employee base. So it's the same thing with Last Chance Joe and everything else that we're going to do. We are, we are being mindful of the traditions of the Nugget and of the community, and the fact that the Nugget has been the largest employer in this community for many, many, many years, if not decades, that it is a cornerstone, cornerstone of entertainment within the community, and we want to enhance our, enhance our facility and live up to the expectations of the community the best that we can.
So I don't have any argument with any of that, but I do know there are some preservationists who are interested in Americana.
I'd love to talk to them.
And so, do timeline, I mean, is, is the chocolate block?
No, it needs to be, I would say that we need to have those discussions very, very quickly because I'm hoping to get something done in the fascia work by, by Woods. So that means it's coming up. We're on a fast track here. I've got, we're working with Penta Group, I don't know if you knew that, construction group, Cunningham Interior Designers and Architects. We're currently hiring a, we have proposals on an outside purchasing group. So we are moving very, very fast, and the city, by the way, has been outstanding to work with. Got our demolition permits right away. We appreciate the work that you did for us in working with us on the transaction side, and of course, we're having that same kind of cooperation from the city and the construction, so that's very important, and I appreciate that. Thank you to all of you. I'm sorry, Julia.
So who would be the best person to work with us on?
Call me. I'm myself.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll talk about, we'll talk about their desires, their needs, and how we can help them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the moral of the story is that Last Chance is running out of.
Yeah, Last Chance, Joe, not the, the Last Chance.
Last Chance.
It's easy.
My question has to do with, quite, the painting of the towers is next year. Is there any room model going on, any of the rooms at all, is that planned?
Yes. Our plan is to, and again, probably starting at the end of the year because the challenge is always the season, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the transaction for us, quite frankly, couldn't have happened in a worse time. And we have been working diligently for several months on the interior design so that we could be in the ground right now, so that we could avoid the summer season and displacement or disruption of our customer, whether it's conventions or out-of-towners or locals. So it looks like we're going to start room renovations in our West Tower, starting with the hallways at the end of this year. So starting sometime after November fifteenth, when it's slow, and we're getting into it full-fledged in January, February, when, when we're off-season.
I'm not worried about the timeframe on it. I just want to make sure I don't misstate something when somebody asks me.
No, 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 no.
I just want to make sure I give them the right information, you know, a year, two years down the road, if the rooms are being remodeled.
Years out on.
I mean, it's not, it's not an issue. I just want to make sure I don't tell the public something different.
No.
I did attend your event on Monday night, and I want to just publicly say thank you again for your investment that you're doing into our community, the investment in enriching and making things live in downtown. It's really appreciated. I guarantee you, it hasn't gone unnoticed in the community. The community's talking about it, and I think you're going to get a good, good response down there. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for the kind comments. We love the Nugget. We intend to get the Nugget back into its former place of grandeur within the community and outside the community, and we're working very hard to, to make that happen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
I didn't have to put the hat on you.
You didn't.
Thanks, Paul.
Didn't take any shots. Thanks, folks, appreciate it. Okay, next is four point two, dog bite prevention, educational coloring duck presentation. Welcome. How are you?
Hello, I'm great. Thank you to Ron Smith, who's not here. He's the one that got me on the agenda. He has been our Scolari's store manager since the store opened, so whenever I have issues concerning the city, I go to him and talk to him. So he suggested that instead of just bringing these to you as a gift, to come to the meeting and present. And my name is Peggy Wu. I'm a local wordsmith and poet. I am published. I am a pet nanny. I used to be Phil Zive's pet nanny. As a councilman, long ago. I'm an educator at TNCC. The little packet that you have is full of all kinds of goodies, so if you pull out your coloring book, you may pull out some goodies, too. Why the coloring book? A few years ago, we noticed that dog bite reports were increasing across the United States, not just here. But the reason was because it's a law that anyone that goes in for treatment for an animal bite at an ER, urgent care, or physician, they need to report it to Animal Services. And so, it looked like things were going up, but really, dog bites have either decreased or have stabilized. The reason for my coloring book is I wanted to educate the public, whether it be an adult like my mailman, who runs from my dachshund, and that's the worst thing you can do with a dachshund, or someone with a rottweiler, could be a little kid. I took the dog's senses, the five senses that we used, and showed you how a dog uses them to communicate. And because I work with all of the rescue groups in town, which you guys may not even know that many of them exist, but I put a list in there, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that any dog can be a biter, but it really depends on how they're raised and how they're trained. And I'm an educator, and I wanted to be able to get out there and make it make sense to people because just reaching for a dog is probably the worst thing you can do, especially if you're a stranger. I wanted to thank a local Sparks business. Ryan Gilmore is here with Gilmore Graphics. He and his wife are graphic artists, and after looking for an artist, a local artist to work with in the summer of two thousand and twelve, I, I am a big networker in this community, and I met Ryan at a networking group, and he and his wife helped me format my book, get it published, and now it's available throughout the community. I work with the Child ID Program and give out coloring books there. We did a program in Yearington in December, and I gave out a hundred books to kids there. I have found a couple of elementary school teachers here in town that use it in their classroom. One is a very low-income Echo Loder School classroom. She, this teacher is trying to build home libraries for the kids so that they can teach their parents how to read and write, and they have something at home to look at. The other teacher that I gave them to is a third-grade teacher at Donner Springs, and she realized that her kids don't. she realized that her kids don't even know how to react around dogs because they can't afford them. It's another low income. My coloring books have been on the Fourth Street corridor. They've been to the Marina Apartments at their Christmas party, and I just wanted City of Sparks to know that something is out here, something quality. And the biggest thing is I want to thank Washoe County Regional Animal Services for the professional advice and encouragement doing this quality piece of education, because without their knowledge, I wouldn't have been able to complete it. And Barry Bird at Animal Services allowed me to take a few minutes of several of the sergeant's time so that I would make sure that I was saying the right thing and, you know, just translating correctly. I picked illustrations in here. A lot of them came from a Polish artist named Igor Zakowski, and he actually, I tracked him down online. He actually communicated with me. But I wanted to make sure that every type of dog was represented in the book so that people would know that the Chihuahua Rescue that I work with, they deal with biters. With the Pit Bull Rescue, they deal with bad press. But I really would like City of Sparks to know how many pet rescue people are in this community. We are one of the most pet-friendly communities in the United States. And one of them, the two I want to mention are in Reno, but CRCS, which is Canine Rehabilitation Center and Sanctuary, recently took over the Cattlemen's Restaurant in Washoe Valley and have remodeled it amazingly, and they're always looking for sponsors and donations. The other one, I don't know if you guys are aware of, but we have the only feline sanctuary in Nevada out in Verde. It's called Feline Rescue of Northern Nevada. And it's so interesting with these pet rescue groups because I would say 99% of them are run by very hard-working, strong women, and they try to do two things. They have maybe a for-profit side, or they work full-time, and then the other side is the nonprofit. But Feline Rescue is one of those half-and-half ones, and Susan Cesarelli has created an amazing place. With my pet, I'm all things pets, and I also am the only pet first aid and CPR instructor in Nevada. So I travel to any group that wants hands-on certification classes. I've also become an official instructor for guide dog users. When I got, first got invited, when they had their convention here, they had the 50th Convention here about four years ago at the Nugget, I realized that I'm very animated, and most of my students would not be able to see me. So I took two of my certified students and blindfolded them and taught the class, and they were able to tell me what they understood and what they didn't understand, because when you're talking to a blind person, you've got to be able to, you know, say the right thing. So I just wanted you guys to know that this is in your community, and that I'm very proud to be a Sparks citizen. And one of the other things I created was this rescue sticker. This is a rescue claim, which Ryan Gilmore also helped me with. It's for the inside of your front door, front window, so that our firemen know what they're getting into in case they have to break into your home. If you tell them you have six dogs and 20 cats, that's good. You might get a ticket, but you're going to be happy that they found them all. And it became almost impossible for me to find these anywhere in town, so I created them myself. So if you guys ever would like one, you've got all my information. You've got pictures of my business cards. My website is on, and I just wanted to thank you for letting me come.
Thank you so much. Any questions from anybody?
I saw Ron Schmidt at an event the other night, and he said he couldn't wait to get his coloring book, so... I'm sorry. I forgot your crayons. So, thank you. That's okay, because that's my motto.
Peggy, thanks for doing this. We appreciate it.
You bet. And if you know of any groups that are interested, please have them give me a call. I do sell the books, but I will donate, and all the profits that I make, my husband Dale and I donate to the local rescues.
Great. It's all about awareness and getting the word out.
It is, it is. And if I can educate someone like my mailman, it's really exciting. So thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I think Mr. Lawson has a special guest.
Yeah, I wanted to bring Jacob Bond down, and I want to, he's here on a, for one of his, come on down, come down, I'm going to talk while you're coming down here. He's doing a merit badge for his Boy Scouts, and any of you that have spoken in public before know how nerve-wracking that can be. Just have a seat right there, and they'll turn the mic on for you. And, but also, you may not know this, that public speaking is the number-one paid profession in the world. So if you can master that at a young age, you're much further ahead. So why don't you tell us a little bit about what merit badge you're working on and why you're here today?
So first of all, my name is Jacob Bond. I'm from Boy Scout Troop 14, and I am here to work, get a requirement done for my citizenship in the community merit badge. I am also here to, because I'm interested about the agenda item 6.3 in regard to the medical marijuana issues. It interests me because there's a lot of different opinions about marijuana. Some people say it's good. Some people say it's bad. Some people don't know what to say about it. Yeah, there's a lot of varied opinions, and yeah, I found that interesting. And so, yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you, Jacob.
Any questions for Jacob?
Well done.
Thanks for being here, Jacob. You ought to get two merit badges for being here, for listening to the councilman, so. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We told him it was going to be on TV when he comes down, so he can go to the internet and cut it out. But Jacob, something happened between that seat over there and to here, and it must be to put in a microphone in front of you because in 10 minutes, I could get 10 words out of you over there, and now you just did an excellent job. You should be very, very proud of yourself. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob. Okay, Consent Items 5.1 through 5.3. I would like to pull 5.2 so staff can make a rec, or a presentation on it. So anybody else want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5.1 and 5.3. It's outlined to my staff.
You have a second?
The exception of 5.2.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 5.1 and 5.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please display. Passes unanimously. Thank you. 5.2, Mr. Cobb?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chris Cobb, Capra Projects Manager. Here before you this evening is the Fourth Street CDVG Curb Gutter Sidewalk Program. This is a continuation of using the Housing, Urban, and Development Funds that we receive every year to refurbish areas of the city that meet the low-income standards during our last census. As part of our action plan, it dealt with the areas between Pyramid Way to Fourth Street and from Prater Way all the way down to Victorian. So this is a continuance. We've done Seventh and Fifth Street. This year, we were doing Fourth Street, right here from Prater Way beside City Hall, all the way down to Victorian. We'll be redoing curb and gutter throughout, and areas of portions of sidewalk that have failed, as well as we'll have some patching along the curb. And then we'll work with residents that so desire maybe a tree in their front, we'll actually get trees in those parkways. If we can find residents, it'll take care of those. Be more than happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions for Chris? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be abstaining on this item because one of my clients own a piece of property within this construction area, and why it's been deemed that I don't have a conflict of interest because it's multiple, multiple property owners. I'm going to be abstaining, caution, on the side of caution.
Ms. Ready?
A little bit different take on it. I'm not going to be abstaining, but I will disclose that I own property on Fourth. I believe that the project affects the neighborhood and everybody equally, so I don't see the need to abstain, but I will disclose in the spirit of the sun, Chinese.
Mr. Lawson?
Well, I don't have any clients or any land there, so I'll make a motion. I move to award the 2014 CDVG Fourth Street Curb Gutter and Pedestrian Improvements federally-funded project bid number 13/14-012 in the amount, to Sierra Nevada Construction, in the amount of $312,007.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Carrigan to approve 5.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, three and one abstention. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Okay, we came close to not being able to vote on that, didn't we? Thanks to... 6.1, Consideration and Possible Approval of Bid Number 1314014 for initial, one-year contract with a possibility of four one-year extensions to Sierra Chemical Company for the amount of $585 per dry tonne to supply sodium bisulfate to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Todd Saxburg, Operations Manager, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. We bring before you today a request for approval for a contract with Sierra Chemical for a winning bid for sodium bisulfate on City of Sparks bid 13/14-014. Sodium bisulfate is a chemical used by Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility to neutralize bleach before effluent is released to the Truckee River System. The bid process garnered $105 price reduction from $690 per dry tonne to $585 per dry tonne from the incumbent supplier, Sierra Chemical of City of Sparks. Based on historical usage of 400 dry tonnes per year, this contract with Sierra Chemical will save roughly $40,000 annually in chemical costs. In conjunction with our recent bleach bid, we should realize approximately $100,000 in chemical savings as a result of rebidding chemical contracts. In conclusion, are there any questions I can answer on this request?
Questions. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is it common to do four one-year extensions on a one-year contract?
That's how we've generally been doing it.
Without going to bid, rebid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
How does this fit in with the proposed plans we're looking at for Tom Wharf? Does this encumber us in any way to move forward with Amoresco or without Amoresco or...
No, sodium bisulfate...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, sodium bisulfate is something we'll be using regardless of any Amoresco upgrades to the facility. It's something we just use to neutralize the bleeds that we put into the final process, so we'll continue using the same amount.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
On my original question, the contract that we just rebid, did we have any extension on that contract that we could, the original contract?
Yes, we did. I think we used all four of our extensions.
And so when was there the big 20% reduction in the cost of this material? In which year? Did it just all of a sudden drop 20%?
I'm not sure. I would have to follow that up with Sierra Chemical. If you'd like me to, I would do that.
That's, that's my concern, is four one-year contracts. How long did we go before we, you know, how much money did we throw away the last four years with the product dropping in price that we paid above market value just to not to rebid a project?
I see. You're saying it could have, we could have possibly gained the savings during our previous extension period instead of waiting until the end of all four, correct?
That's correct, and that's a long, I mean, you're talking five years now to go ahead and a contract with no review in it. Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve the Council Award Bid Number 13/14-014 for sodium bisulfate to Sierra Chemical Company.
You have a second? Ms. Ready?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ready to approve Agenda Item 6.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
6.2, Consideration and Possible Approval of Victorian Square Amphitheater Remodel Project to Houston Smith Construction, Inc. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Casson, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brian Casey, Senior Civil Engineer at City of Sparks.
Chris Cobb, again, the Capra Projects Manager, City of Sparks.
Essentially, this is a project caused because we had, I've had a lot of birds in the Victorian Amphitheater, and they have made a mess, so we're trying to remedy that problem by initially cleaning up the entire building and closing the rest of the roof and the ceiling, and there are some lights that need to be replaced because the ceiling is getting installed. And that's about it, I think. Is there any questions?
Questions. Is this going to make it any more usable than it was in the past, maybe?
The intent of the project is to provide a more programmable space for our Parks Department. They worked with Brian Casey throughout the design of the project, had spoke to us about kind of their desires and what to do with it. With enclosing the ceiling, both the roof and the underside, it's removing those areas of roost for the birds. Obviously, you can always have birds anywhere, but instead of netting and doing this, it provides a better programmable space for them. I know Francine and Tracy Dominguez are very excited about this and to get this back and into our programs throughout the summer.
Okay. Questions. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I'm reading the report correctly, 134,000 is going to be coming from a project that was, that lined up those budgets for this item, right? The other 130,000 is coming from Bike Path Rehabilitation Projects and citywide elevator retrofit and upgrades projects.
Yes, sir. The original budget was not sufficient when we received bids. We took a look at the CIP and what was planned for our Bike Path Rehab. We felt that those items for Bike Path Rehab could be put off for a year, and then the elevator funding is actually, that came in under budget. So with the savings in that project, we're using those savings so we can move forward with this project.
So no money's coming out of redevelopment?
No, sir.
Why, why not?
At this time, we don't have...
Why are we taking general fund or franchise tax fees or park fees for the, for a district and not using redevelopment funds?
That would be kind of a policy decision by you and the council currently. In the CIP, we do not have those funds allocated to do projects with.
What do we have, 2.3 million in that, in that fund right now, redevelopment agency money, or 1.8 million, something like that, that we have no projects for it?
I wouldn't be able to discuss that. That would be a question for finance, sir.
As soon as it makes sense for me, it's a downtown redevelopment project that only special events and stuff use that building, that that is a prime redevelopment funds project for money, instead of taking money that affect the general fund or other franchise fees, road department, you know, I mean, one fund is extremely restricted, and other funds are not as restricted, but we're using the least restrictive on something that could be done in the most restrictive fund.
Free record mail, Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. Councilmember Schmidt, you certainly raise some, some good questions. If it is your desire and the balance of the council's desire, we can certainly take this item away today with withhold approval and study potential alternate funding sources. I think the one you made, you were making reference to was the two-and-a-half percent Victorian Square Room Tax Fund. That, you know, that answer gets quite long and involved and requires a change of plan, so I don't think that's potentially a viable source. But if you wanted us to look at, at other redevelopment funds for downtown, we could do that if that's what you want us to do. Understanding that we've already got more programmed into what we, what we want to do downtown than we have funds available. So we would be having a discussion inside of those funds of if we're going to do this project, what aren't we going to do? Something analogous to what we did by freeing up some of the Bike Path funds to make, to bring this recommendation forward today.
And I understand, and that's where the pre-discussion comes into, and I think that that should have been something that redevelopment had a chance to take a look at if they wanted to put money into that or not. Because that's, that's, you know, for a year now, we've been asking, what are the projects downtown that really need to get done to refresh, to bring, you know, to sparkle downtown? And this, to me, comes to, you know, just a classic project to do that, to get that money. money spent for it. And I don't... maybe Ms. Ready has a comment on it. I know Ron's not here to talk about redevelopment funds, but she could, you know, talk about it.
Mr. Lawson, first you all let Ms. Ready go.
I'll refer to Ms. Ready.
So I have a clarifying question. Are you talking about redevelopment funds or are you talking about the room tax dollar funds?
Either one.
Okay. So I would defer to finance or the city manager in terms of having redevelopment funding available. My understanding that was everything that was available in redevelopment had been budgeted for something else. So that's my understanding on that. In terms of the room tax funds, I can tell you that the chairman, Mr. Smith and I are working diligently with staff to lay the groundwork necessary to be able to repurpose the room tax funds based on the legislation that was passed in the last session to be able to use them for refreshing the square. Unfortunately, probably not surprisingly, it's not as simple as flipping a switch. We have a master plan, a committee as defined by an R S that needs to be populated. And unfortunately, I don't believe if we waited to use those funds for this project, we would be able to finish it by the summer. So for me, this is a project that has been hanging out there for a long time. The pigeon roost in the center of our events footprint has not been hopeful for the last couple of years, so I'm interested in making sure that we get this done before the summer. So my understanding, and feel free, Mr. Carrigan, if... I don't see anybody from finance, is that redevelopment is full budgeted. The room tax dollars have significant process that we need to go through. Not in terms of... the team has already gone out and assessed the capital needs, so that's not the work that needs to be done. The work that needs to be done is our ability to actually expend those monies in the way that the legislature has directed. And if we want to get it done this year, this is the creative funding solution that the staff has worked hard to make it happen. Is that an accurate reflection? Mr. Ray?
Yes, that's an accurate reflection, and we did not budget capital funds for this project from redevelopment agency because of the pending shortfall in that district. And so we're trying to retain as much of the operating cash as we can to make bond payments. And so the staff has been trying to find sources where we could remedy something which has a significant health problem with the pigeon droppings, the facility is unusable. As Neil said, we'd be happy to bring back a report looking at alternatives if you have a concern. I do echo Julia's comments on the timing of the project for it to be available this summer removes quite a bit of blight from affecting all of our special events. And we certainly will have a long process in reprogramming the Victorian Square room tax monies because those are currently limited to just the six-block area of Victorian Square.
So does that venture your question, Councilman Schmidt?
Thank you, yes.
So I guess my question on following up to that is, I'm assuming we can't approve the contract without identifying the funding source, that that's not allowed in the government process?
That's correct, huh?
And is there sufficient time to review this and put it on a future agenda and still get the project built by the summer?
No.
Okay. So that helps me to make my decision. Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
I was going to make a suggestion that how about we okay this with the funds sources listed and if we can later on repair ourselves with the room tax. How's that?
That we can certainly look into.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We do have other discussions. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve this with the caveat that we can look into future funding sources now. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
I guess I'm questioning spending the money to begin with. I thought we talked about tearing this thing down because we're going to move our center to Victorian Square where we're going to build a much bigger, brighter, better $2.2 million project that I've seen for the past three years. That... to me, you're taking 10% of the budget and you're repairing something that's going to be obsolete in a few years.
To try and answer your question, Councilman Lawson, certainly leveling the facility and creating programmable space was an option that was considered by staff. I think it's probably the best... the question could probably be best answered by Parkson Recreation Director Tracy because I know there is significant interest in having that programmable space down on the square, and I think she can probably speak to it.
I'd be curious to know if there's some kind of return on investment there.
Mayoral Council, Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. This has gone back and forth quite a bit, to be honest. And although that was one of the considerations to demolish it as programmers of an amenity within a special event venue, we felt that we could program it, get some revenue out of it. Not knowing how many more years it might be if we ever realize the reality of that beautiful plan on the plaza, we had no amphitheater-type seating until something else is produced. So we thought that... we've got events producers right now waiting to use that facility this summer. We haven't been able to rent it for the last two years, so we would like to keep it. We have... there is storage in there as well, and that facility includes storage and restrooms that event producers also use.
I'm torn.
I understand.
Because the two-cent room tax can go to build the new amphitheater. It falls within that area. So that's a hard decision for me because that's 10% of that new...
Well, the new plan, the plaza plan, if I recall, is a beautiful covered area but not with amphitheater-type seating. It would cover the plaza, the north half of the plaza, where there used to be tops of the seasonal ice rink that might go under the permanent covered.
I remember seeing in the plans, though, that there was a stage and speakers and electrical and all of that.
There was electrical and sound. I don't know that the stage was permanent. That was, I believe, an option if producers wanted to bring in a stage that was giving them a feel of what it would look like with the stage brought in. It wasn't permanent.
Ms. Ready?
So I think that since the days of the conversation of the plaza, and I'm sure that it's off the table, it's still there, but that our funding picture changed dramatically. And to be able at the times that we talked about putting together the plaza, it required an investment of both the room tax dollars and the redevelopment dollars to get it done. The reality of our current situation is that redevelopment area one may need... it's underfunded. We can't pay our current expenses. And so I think the thinking of redevelopment is shifting a little bit to say we need to make sure that we keep the current infrastructure as fresh as possible so that we don't lose some of the special events that we have. So our conversations to date, and we have not had the opportunity to bring this back to you yet, but our conversations to date really are about making sure that we maximize those room tax dollars to refresh the infrastructure. So to Councilman Carrigan's request, absolutely, we should go back and look at whether or not we can use these dollars, those dollars to do this. But understand, there's a long list of deferred maintenance on the square that needs to be addressed in order to keep the hot August nights, the cook-offs, the large-scale events, the parade, the things that we do downtown currently. And so we just displace it here, and we're still going to have a deferred maintenance need at the end of the day. But let's... absolutely, let's pursue it. And to the plaza, it's a nice idea, but it doesn't pencil for any time in the near future, and so in the meantime, keeping the amenity that we have makes sense to me.
We thought it was also more valuable to provide that shaded seating for events. It was closed all of last year and most of the year before, and there's nowhere to sit. It does provide, although you might not have it programmed during a specific event, it does provide shaded seating that we wouldn't normally have.
I think the other piece that we talked about is if you demolish the amphitheater and just basically repay it, that actually isn't free. And so either way, you're investing in... but we can't leave it the way it is. I mean, it's no longer appropriate to leave it as is.
My thought was something was better than nothing.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tracy, you said we got an event producer that presently stores equipment on city property and rents that stage. What's our annual yearly revenue for that stage?
I'm going to start a little bit on the storage. Actually, our park maintenance in Public Works or Community Services uses that storage area for equipment that's needed on the square during events, so it's our storage. The... before it was inhabitable, it was not rented very often. We didn't rent it. So I don't have numbers or history to show you the potential revenues that that facility can bring in. Francine can come down and explain what event producer she's been talking to and what they plan to use it for and what that money might look like.
I'm just trying to support Mr. Lawson's here, you know, that, okay, we got a $234,000 investment that equates to X amount of dollars a year that... okay, so it is maybe five years before we do the master plan. How much of the $230,000 we're going to recoup back in rental costs that we're not getting now, but I guess we've never rented it out before on a separate line item, but we just...
No, we have not. It's been rented a couple of times that I can recall for public rallies, and that's about it. It really has just been a part of the entire venue, not advertised or sold as a separate amenity. We feel with these improvements, we can program it as a separate amenity as well, and that's where we would get the rental fees from.
And I understand that we're in this position, but do we even have a budget that if we do this, we're going to anticipate next year, not this cycle, but next year when we go into full marketing and, you know, that how much money we'd make, how many times a year would we rent it out? Help me here, Tracy.
I'm trying because I want to help myself, too. I'm going to ask Francine to maybe address that question since she's working directly with the event producers.
Francine Burge, Special Events Supervisor, for the record. Currently, we have about, I would say, 41 events that happen downtown. Of those, about half would be using the amphitheater. We do not rent Victorian Square as a space. We don't have permitting outside of the $40 permitting fee. We have in the past gone to Parks and Rec Commission to see if we could increase rental fees, whether or not we're renting the plaza out, Victorian Square, or the amphitheater. And that is definitely something that is all ready to go, and we can bring it back to Parks and Rec Commission for a fee proposal.
So if I'm correct, we have no rental of... we don't even charge if we have a special event for downtown for the space of the whole thing, the whole...
No, we do not.
We have no rental fee for that?
No. It's just the permitting process.
Thank you.
Ms. Ready?
I just want to echo what Ms. Burge said. Again, I'm not approaching the front of this as going to generate new revenue standpoint. That's not what I'm advocating for. What I'm advocating for is of the 40-some events, the 20-some that already use it, we have an issue with our current event users. The Victorian Square is falling apart, and this is the most visible challenge, if you will, because it's covered in big feces, to say it. So I'm interested in preserving the income streams that we have from the events, both the economic impact that they produce as well as they do pay for their services. I mean, our approach to special events has not been to rent the facility. It's been to charge for the services that we provide. And as I'm sure we're all well aware, we're already getting pushback from the event producers in charging for the services. So I'm not sure that layering on charging for venues at the same time supports what Tor Mark and several other folks are trying to do, or Ms. Burge is trying to do in terms of promoting the region and bringing in these special events. So for me, it's a preservation conversation, not a generating new revenue conversation because we need to keep those events that we currently have, and we need to not have a pigeon coop in the middle of our events venue. Right. We... our goal is to be 100% covered on our city costs when it comes to events, so it's a zero net gain. We're at at about 85% right now, and I'll be bringing those numbers at the next City Council meeting. But yes, this is an amenity downtown that is valuable to our producers, and they do see it as a reason to come downtown Sparks because it's one less stage that they would have to set up and purchase and rent and secure. So it's already one of those built-in things. It's a nice amenity for them.
Mr. Schmidt?
I guess my... I'm kind of just taken aback because I don't think that's a policy of any other facility, is it? If you're going to rent Golden Eagle Park or use it, you're going to rent it, right?
Yeah, park... we have field rental fee policies and structures for our sports complexes and some rentable parks. This has been suggested in the past to the Parks and Recreation Commission and was not recommended due to timing of the economic situation. Many, many years ago, when I was in the events office back in 2000, I had actually created a fee structure. If you want three city blocks, it's this much. If you want six city blocks, it's this much. I was a supervisor at the time. I have no idea where that went, other than I knew it didn't come to you.
I guess it just seems to be a different policy for downtown because I know if you're going to use the Marina, you're going to pay a fee. Golden Eagle, you're going to pay. If you even want a neighborhood park for, you know, a two-year-old birthday party, you're going to pay a fee for it. I'm not aware of any facility in the City of Sparks that you can have a private or a public event at that you don't pay a fee to do that. So and our largest, probably most expensive facility to keep up and maintain is free. I just... I can see why we're in the problem is that we're not really... we don't have the money to reinvest in things. So I think that there's enough on the table. I think the motion's a good motion, and I think we've got a second. I don't think we're going to solve these issues today. You know, I agree with Julia that this has got to be done. You know, something's got to be done here, either torn down or it's got to be fixed. I don't want to tear it down and not have it replaced for 10 years, but I do think that we've got a much bigger issue here that we need to get back and talk to, and pretty quick.
And hopefully, staff will be before you soon about a possible funding source, an asset preservation fee, if you will, that we're excited about. It is a revenue generation down in Victorian Square. We'll be bringing that to you soon.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, if anyone remembers that. Does everyone understand the motion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, ladies. Appreciate it. 6.3, discussion and possible direction to initiate amendments to Title 20 to allow medical marijuana establishments in appropriate non-residential zoning districts. Mr. O'Nellis?
Mayor of Tene, Members of the City Council, I'm Armando O'Nellis, your City Mayor. A little background. In the year 2000, Nevada voters passed Question 9, which amended the state constitution to sanction missile marijuana and specifically to allow physicians to authorize qualified patients to consume marijuana. However, no provision was made for obtaining marijuana, other than basically growing your own. Last year, the Nevada Legislature passed, and Governor Sandoval signed into law Senate Bill 374, and that directed the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services to develop regulations for and oversee the creation of licensed establishments to produce, test, and dispense marijuana and marijuana-infused products. So the Health Department has prepared draft regulations, and we're expecting their adoption either next month or in April. The state could therefore begin accepting applications shortly after that, and they're indicating that they anticipate medical marijuana establishments could be operating as early as this fall. If the council is interested in allowing entrepreneurs looking for a Sparks location to submit for a state license this summer, then the city needs to amend its zoning and business license codes in the coming months so that those applicants will be ready to go because they have to identify a specific location as part of their application to the state. Currently, medical marijuana establishments are not in allowed use in any of our zoning districts. So what this agenda item is for is to allow the City Council the opportunity to give direction to staff to proceed with preparing code amendments that we would then take to the Special Plan Commission and ultimately bring back to City Council. the Special Plan Commission and ultimately bring back to City Council for a reading of the zoning laws. In addition to this, staff will be back in front of you at the second meeting this month to ask for direction or to give you the opportunity to direct staff to proceed with code amendments to amend Title 5, which is the business licensing section of our code. So that concludes my presentation, and if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Questions for Armando, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Armando has the state produced their guidelines yet and which we can write our ordinance on?
They have produced draft regulations, and those are being reviewed by the Legislative Council Bureau. The LCB cannot, cannot change the regulations, but they can comment on them, and then they would be adopted by the State Department of Health after they've been reviewed by the LCB. So they've been issued, you know, they've been out there back and forth, and we've reviewed those, but, you know, by and large, while there are some changes that could be made, certainly that might affect the provisions on the zoning side, by and large, I think the zoning side of it is relatively straightforward, and so we would, you know, we would proceed down the path of starting that process. If you give us that direction today, and then, you know, once they're approved in March or April, we would then, you know, look to finalize them before taking them to Plan Commission.
So the state won't do any zoning guidelines, it's going to be up to the city to do the zoning guidelines?
Well, they have, the Senate Bill 374 includes some provisions that have to do with the distance that these facilities would have to be from schools and then what I'll refer to as community facilities, which are things like DECA facilities. So that's, that's actually in the, in the state law. Other than that, they say it's up, that establishments would have to comply with local zoning.
Okay, so the item you bring in in two weeks is what we're going to adopt in Sparks where we think it can be or where you have to adopt the state guidelines for this?
No, and I'm sorry if I, if I muddied the waters on this. I think really what we're, the zoning amendments wouldn't be coming back to the City Council before April at the, at the earliest. What we would be coming back with in two weeks is a companion item to this one, which would give us, give you the opportunity to direct staff to start on the code amendments on the, on the business licensing side because there's, there's a land use side, and then there's the business licensing side. And on the business licensing, I would assume that, you know, we're looking at not only just a business license, but perhaps some sort of privileged license, similar to that you would, as you would have for, you know, a gaming establishment or an establishment that sells alcohol.
Can we consider a franchise? Limitation of two?
I guess that would be a question that would be addressed as part of that, that review with the staff once we start the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, Armando, I just want to make this clear because all we're saying is we want to look at grow facilities, for example, in industrial, in dispensaries, in commercial. I'm not sure if you need anything else other than saying that if we were to do it, those would be where to go.
Yes, in a nutshell, I mean, I think what, what today's item is about is simply saying, go work on these code amendments and then bring them back to us.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Armando, the other two entities, Wash County and Reno, put a moratorium on this, is that correct?
Well, I think, I don't know if Wash County did anything along those lines. The city of Reno did what they refer to as a stay on applications, on receiving applications. So they're not accepting applications from businesses for, for this purpose. It is our understanding at the staff level that both entities are looking at, at the regulations themselves and are looking to amend their codes, and staff will be meeting with, with our counterparts at those jurisdictions later this week, in fact, to, to basically try to coordinate.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Rady?
There you go. So I was late for it. So I just looked out at it 10 seconds. Okay. City, let's see. I move to direct staff to prepare bill for, for City Council consideration of amendments to Title 20 to allow medical marijuana establishments to locate in non-residential zoning districts.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Rady, seconded by Karen, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passionately, thanks, Armando. 6.4 Is Consideration of Possible Approval of Professional Consulting Services Contract for the North Truckee Drain Channel Improvements at Lillard Drive. Mr. Hummel?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the City of Sparks. This item I have before you today is a professional services contract with StanTech. This is for a project on the North Truckee Drain Channel just upstream of Lillard Drive. Got the overhead if it comes up, Paul. This project will work. It's separate from the overall North Truckee Drain alignment here. The actual work we're proposing is right in this area. About 140 feet of channel there that is open. Essentially, it's mud bottom, it's never been lined.
Do you want to manage your streets to do them?
Yeah.
Where we are?
As far as location, this is Interstate 80 here, the off-ramp to Sparks Boulevard, and then this is Lillard and Briarly. So three main purposes of this project. We want to line that 140 feet that's open, doesn't have a concrete lining. We want to provide a maintenance access, so we'll have a ramp down into it so the guys can actually get in and clean it. The third one is putting in a trash collection system to catch floating debris that's coming down so it doesn't end up in the North Truckee Drain once we've boxed it and relocated it downstream. So that is my presentation. If there's any questions?
Questions for Andy? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Ms. Rady?
I move to approve the professional consulting services contract for the North Truckee Drain Channel Improvements at Lillard Drive Project to StanTech Consulting, making the amount of $120,800.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Raddick, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.4 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passionously, thanks, Andy. 6.5 is a first reading.
Bill number 2666, in ordinance by the City of Sparks, amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code providing standards for the erection of any new school or the alteration of an existing school and other matters properly relating thereto pursuant to Nevada Assembly Bill 87 in 2013.
This is a first reading of Bill number 2666. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, February 24, 2014. 6.6 is PCN 13014, Discussion and Possible Action on Attentive Map Request for 617-Watt Residential Subdivision on a Site Approximately 120 Acres in Size in the New Urban District Stone Brook Plan Development. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Councilman, I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a request for tentative map for 617-watt subdivision. This would be Phase 1 of the Stone Brook Plan Development. Here's Pyramid Highway, this is La Pasada, this area outlines Phase 1. The tentative map was originally approved by City Council on August 23, 2006. The approved tentative map had expired, so this applicant is requesting and resubmitted this tentative map. The map before you today is identical to the map that was originally approved and had expired in 2006. The Planning Commission reviewed this tentative map on August 16, 2014, and recommends approval. Here's an overall map, whoops, of the proposed tentative map, which is actually four villages, A, B, C, and D. Planning staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of the tentative map with 24 conditions. The findings and the conditions I have attached separately as items to your staff report. This concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Carrigan, I are discussing who makes the motion on this because when it was in Mr. Carrigan's word, he made the motion on it, so now it's been transferred into my word, so I get to make the motion on reconfirming his motion from a couple of years ago. So I move to approve the tentative map associated with PCN 13014, adopting findings T1 through T12 and the facts supporting these findings, and set forth the staff report, subject conditions 1 through 24, listing the staff report.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve Agenda Item 6.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passionously, thanks, Carrigan. 6.7 Is Consideration of Possible Approval of the City of Sparks Extending an Official Invitation to the City of Longford, Ireland to Visit Sparks in March 2014. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The manager of the Town of Longford did send an email to our office asking that we consider sending them an invitation so that they could have one more visit to the City of Sparks. It's likely this visit would occur in the month of March, and it is traditional for any type of invitation like this to be acted upon by the City Council, so on behalf of the mayor, the county staff placed this item on your agenda, and we would be extending a letter of invitation, and from there, work out the travel arrangements and activities. We have had a relationship with Longford for, since 1976, and it would be an opportunity for you as a council and the community to celebrate the tour, which occurred at that time. The staff has placed a plan in a budget number of about $2,500. That will be subject to change, certainly as activities and things that we develop with our park staff and with the Longford folks are developed. Once upon receiving the invitation, we will hear back quickly from the Town of Longford and let you know if the event is on. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Carrigan? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the council knows how I feel about these sister city programs and how valuable they've been for relationships not only across state lines here in the United States, but across the country. And I can tell you that about four years ago, five years ago, Councilman Smith and I took 50 of our Sparks High School seniors and juniors in a marching band to Ireland for seven days, in which the hospitality of the Irish folks, especially the council of Longford, was phenomenal. I can guarantee you those folks spent more than $2,500 just on the bus to go ahead and take these kids around. They put them up at houses, they had events for them all over the country that we took those kids. They played at the Gaelic, they're the only high school band to ever play at the Gaelic football championships in Ireland in the history of Gaelic football. Everybody knows what Gaelic football is. It's a cross between soccer, football, and basketball. So it's, it's a little bit, it was, it was fun, but kids were, did a phenomenal job, and I think a lot of those kids that they're still in the area in school would love to participate in, in reciprocating for the gift that they gave these kids. And I still get kids today that write me emails and stuff and tell me what a wonderful it was, it was a, I don't want to say it changed their life, but it did affect their lives in a very positive way, so I would support this wholeheartedly.
Mr. Lawson?
The $2,500 is used, we're using for hospitality, I assume?
Yes, sir, that's a very early estimate, and I like the practice of keeping it informed as to the cost of events and stuff, but we, we throw that out as a placeholder.
Thanks, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Anyone else looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We move to approve the City of Sparks extending an official invitation to the City of Longford, Ireland to visit Sparks in March of 2014.
Do you have a second? Ms. Rady?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Raddick to approve Agenda Item 6.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Moving on to Public Carriages, PCN 12014, Consideration of and Possible Action to amend the Master Plan and to, and to add an amendment to a final plan development handbook on a site approximately 12 acres in the size in the New Urban District zoning district located on the northeast corner of Kylie Parkway and David Allen Parkway, Sparks, Nevada. Who's doing this? Ms. Melby? We have a question by, or a statement by Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Before the City Council considers PCN 12014, I've been advised when a city turns the office to make the thorough disclosure. Carlos Vasquez holds a principal position and interest in Zozak Land Company. Mr. Vasquez and I were involved in high-profile litigation concerning whether the state's Ethics Commission ban on political volunteerism violates the First Amendment guarantee of free association. As a result of the litigation, Mr. Vasquez has not participated on any campaign among as a volunteer otherwise for nearly eight years. The state of Nevada has completely extinguished our protective political relationship. As a result, I do not believe that the Nevada Ethics and Government Law requires me to abstain from voting on this matter. Thank you.
Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a consideration of two actions. The property involved in this request is located, here would be Pyramid Highway, this would be Sparks Boulevard and Kylie Parkway, it's the parcel in green. The first item is the Master Plan Amendment to change the land use designation from public institution to a new land use designation called mixed-use residential. This is the land use map for the entire Kylie Ranch North, and I have outlined the property with the mixed-use residential on it. The proposed mixed-use residential designation permits single-family and multifamily uses as well as group residential care facilities, which would include assisted care and senior housing. The other permitted is limited to the unit of 15 or less slots and office in the existing welcome center. The second item on today, on your agenda today is an amendment to the final plan hand development for Phase 2 of Kylie Ranch North. The recorded handbook for Phase 2 of Village 35 consists of 12 acres and was recorded in 2006. The proposed amendments in the handbook change the standards to reflect residential development, including the architecture, landscaping, and site design. The Master Plan Amendment was found in conference by the Regional Planning Commission with the regional plan on January 22, 2014. Village 14 is located in the center, a central part of the Kylie Ranch North. The surrounding area is not developed at this time, and Kylie Ranch Master Plan for a mix of yute land uses with the intent to provide a housing-job balance. The proposed Master Plan Amendment would not change the job-housing balance, especially if the site does get developed as assisted living, it would provide jobs. The mixed-use residential will offer housing in the central part of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, which is convenient to the future commercial and medical campus and business park uses. If you remember, a while back, we had this be a medical campus for a renowned hospital. The proposed use would potentially provide a different type of housing than has been previously approved in this plan development. The handbook standards regulates the site design, building architecture, height, setbacks, landscaping, and infrastructure improvements. The Phase 2 handbook amendment proposes different land uses than was approved in the tentative handbook, that being the new designation of mixed-use residential. The revised plan maintains the integrity of the plan, but proposes a new land use designation in an area surrounded by arterials and possibly supports the job-housing balance goal of the plan development handbook. It is staff's opinion that the final draft handbook or this amendment could potentially vary three of the five criteria for the determination of compliance of a final handbook with the approved tentative handbook. It varies the ratio of residential to non-residential uses, it does reduce the common open space by about a half an acre, and it could increase the total ground coverage of the buildings along with the increase of, an increase in permitted height. Based on these findings, staff has determined that this amendment requires a public hearing which you will be, was held at Planning Commission and you are holding today. today. On November 21st, 2013, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, approved the master plan amendment, and recommends that the City Council approve the final handbook amendment. Attached to my staff report in separate documents are the master plan findings, and the plan development handbook findings, and the plan development handbook. Based on the master plan and the PD findings, as discussed in my staff report and my presentation today, staff and the Planning Commission is recommending approval. Please remember that you will have two separate motions today, one for the master plan, and one for the final handbook. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby? Okay, applicant would like to say anything?
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and Karen did a great job of summarizing the project. We worked really hard with Karen, as well as with the surrounding landowners, to mitigate any concerns that they had. And at this point, I'd be available for any questions that you might have.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience would like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have you clear something up for me, because I want to make sure, the 12 acres that we're talking about had zero units on it before, and it's going to have 288 units now, correct?
That is correct. It was a public institution. It was, it was actually where they have put the sales office, or, you know.
Right, the welcome center, the welcome, right.
The welcome center, that's the term.
But, we're going to have a reduction, it appears, of 700 and something units, I can't find that paragraph, on another lot, because of change in zoning. Which lot was that? I'm sorry, I should have asked you earlier, I didn't know you were taking your PowerPoint, they're out.
That's all right. Wait for the diagram to come up. We had a handbook amendment on this area. This was originally changed, it was originally, when that tentative handbook came in, this was commercial, and then residential. And then, this was amended a few years ago to put, all make it multifamily, and that's where those units were coming from. When this handbook amendment came in last year, we eliminated the multifamily in this section, and made that all arterial commercial. So, that's the reference to the reduction in the number of units.
So, we decreased residential, increased commercial, and so that's where we're picking up the loss of the residents through that action, not this action?
And then also, there was a piece of multifamily over here, that when the Renown project came in, we zoned all that to community commercial.
With those numbers in mind, what does that do to the total square footage of commercial that's planned? Does that increase everything now, commercial?
Um, well, it increases the amount of acreage. At this point, we don't know what the square footage would be for the commercial. We don't have any projects.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Just one other question. We have a motion on here for the first one. You said you had a second motion for the final handbook. I don't have that one. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, they run together, thank you. All right, I need to certify the master plan amendment of PCN 12014, based on findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings set forth in the staff report, and you want both motions to be taken at the same time?
They have to be separate.
Yeah. Do you have a second? Ms. Rady?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Rady, to approve six point, eight point one as outlined by staff. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
I just disclosed that I have done business with Mr. Vasquez in the past, and I have no monetary gain in approving of this project. So, I'm going to go ahead and vote on it anyways.
Okay, I will disclose too. Mr. Vasquez has been my campaign manager for how many ever years I've been running, and has continues in that position. I have no vote, but just wanted to disclose, seeing we're in the mood of disclosing everything that we do here, so. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Mr. Schmidt?
I move to approve the final handbook amendment associated with PCN 12014, based on the facts supporting the findings, PD1 through PD21, as set forth in the staff report.
Do you have a second? Ms. Rady?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Rady, to approve the handbook. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. We haven't closed motion? Close the door? Comments from the public? Anyone in the public would like to make a comment? Comments from the City Council and City Manager? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.